I'm not sure that I'm 100% but I've lost that skill. It's not like that.
Yeah, the recreation grants came and went so quickly, it felt like. There's Mike.
Brianna, are you watching any kids these days?
Just with cross-country running on two days a week, but no, I'm not. I'm freshly kid-free. Although this summer, I didn't have any responsibilities either. Yeah, it's kind of weird and they outgroom me, which happens every few years. But I'm not, I said no to the ones that asked in May. They're brand-new families to me. I nanny for lots of families and just ready for this and other things. I'm not concerned about winter at all for that reason. Hello, Mike.
Oh, yeah, somebody will come for him. Oh, no, I haven't. Wow, I really have to get up in the middle of the meeting. Thank you.
And Hardy got you something, it's in your office. Thank you so much, and I left this thank-you card in the car, sir. Thank you.
Oops, I think I did, but it was because it was very heavy on me. It was really helpful that that way I couldn't make a motion last time. That was good.
Hi, oh my gosh, now we have extra people.
Funny, I bought it last time I had to run up to the slogan. I was walking from the airport without one, so I bought it there. Because I had one, but it stunk so bad, I was like, oh man, we sound sick wearing this thing. That's funny, right? You can just smell if you're going to eat it or not, yeah. Not like that.
We will wait about one more minute and we'll start. Okay, how many people do we have on the lines? Let's see, does it look like? Oh, about a dozen, so, okay. We will start. If people have difficulty understanding me while I'm wearing a mask, I may take the mask off while I'm speaking and then put it back one at a time. I will try with it on, though. So it's September the 20th, GBOS regular meeting. Welcome to everybody. This is probably our most hybrid meeting that we've had so far. Let's go through some standing statements. The Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards Conduct. Call a meeting to order at 7:84. We'll do roll call and any disclosures. My name is Mike Higginson, I am co-chair and land use supervisor.
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety Supervisor. Guy Wade, Fire Department Supervisor.
And do we have Amanda on the furniture? Not there.
I have not seen Amanda on the phone yet.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any disclosures? Okay, so we'll hand over the virtual gavel to Brianna, and I have a disclosure. On item number six, the Girdwood Health Clinic, my wife is on the board of directors for Girdwood Health Clinic.
Okay, if anyone has anything to say about that, I think it is fine and don't see a conflict. Hand the, yeah, no, I'll hand the gavel back over.
Thank you, I should mind taking it. Okay, we'll do agenda meeting approval for tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Guy, and a second?
Second.
I don't know who got that first, I'll leave that to Margaret. Okay, we'll do this as a voice vote, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And any against? Not seeing anyone against, that's unanimously approved. Next is the August the 16th, 2021 GBOS regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? So again, we'll do a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, any against? Not hearing any, pass that unanimously. And finally, August the 16th, 2021, GBOS work session three minutes approval.
I move to approve the GBOS budget work session three.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I have one question about that.
Sure, you want a second if we discuss?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. Want to discuss?
Yeah, I should have cut this earlier, I'm sorry. I think maybe, unless I remember incorrectly, maybe something got switched around. I'm sorry, Margaret, I should have checked this earlier. But on the roads budget and the parks budget, I think the original request, I think GBOS actually increased the roads budget, not decreased, and we decreased parks. I think those got reversed. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
I do not recall which way, I think you're right, but I'm not 100% certain. The end state is that both of them ended up being 120,000.
Correct, but I just think it got reversed, and the reason why I remember the parks being higher is because we thought, just because the playgrounds had been budgeted in, and then at another point, Winter Creek, and then now we're thinking we might be able to find alternative sources. But also, it looked weird to have parks getting more than roads, so I remember that being the other way around.
What I would suggest then is we, rather than, because we don't know which way around it was originally, we leave this as kind of a technical correction for staff to finish off. We just note that we'd like them to confirm.
I should have mentioned that earlier, I'm sorry. I blew over it the first time.
If everyone is happy with that, on that basis, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Not hearing any no's, unanimously approved. Okay, so we have some announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand either physically or virtually, and wait to be acknowledged. We have, Margaret will be paying attention to any hands in the chat and the online. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board or other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion and be respectful of everyone's opinions. We go straight into introductions, presentations, and reports. Legislative report for the State Legislature Assembly and Anchorage School Board. I see at least the school board member online, I'm not sure about the state or assembly. Should we start with Kelly Lessons, do you want to go ahead?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, oh great, well, thanks for, thanks for making this happen. Yeah, so it's a pleasure to be here virtually, it's a little bit of an easier commute for me from the Lower Hillside here. But I did want to share with the Girdwood community what's happening in ASD right now. As you guys know, school's underway, the site visits that I have been a part of so far, visiting schools, there's so much energy among the students, they're so happy to be back. The educators and staff are working tremendously hard and principals are all just. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, ASD is, they're projecting an enrollment this year of about 44,000 students. That was the most recent update we received. Numbers were sort of sorting out, you know, as kids move into town or move around town or re-enroll. They were pretty much spot on for projections at the high school level and very close at middle school. Elementary projections were a little bit higher than actual numbers, so that was an update that we received. Tomorrow is our next school board meeting, and we'll be starting something new then. As you may know, as I hope I've brought up before, we have a new set of goals and guardrails, which are going to guide the district over the next five years. Focus on reading proficiency for K through 3, math proficiency for grades 3 through 9, and then career college-like readiness for our graduates. And so tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting, we're going to be focused on understanding where our youngest readers are at, and the board is going to go do a deep dive into the data. And I can email the Board of Supervisors these links that were shared, or maybe I can put them in the chat here. I will say, let's see, at our last finance committee meeting, the school board learned about the timeline for ASD's announcement of how it would like to allocate this last round of federal funds. It's about $112 million. We can expect a plan from the administration at the November 1st board meeting, so I guess we'll have another GBOS meeting between now and then. But I'll be looking forward to hearing how it really speaks to the community's priorities of addressing student learning loss, air quality issues, and the needs of underserved students. As you guys may know, ASD is still moving forward with in-person schooling. Masks are being a part of daily life in our schools. I haven't seen kids have much of a problem with that. The district is updating its school start plan on the 1st and 15th of every month. And I'll say that in response to community concerns, especially from some folks in Girdwood, the district updated its COVID dashboard online, so you can see what case counts are like at any given school. So I appreciated hearing from community members who spoke up, and the district was able to respond with more transparency, so, you know, families could know whether it felt safe for them to go visit grandma and grandpa, or just know where things were in their neighborhood school or school their kids were at. There was also a recent policy change regarding quarantines, and from what I understand, the quarantine of asymptomatic close contacts is no longer required. And that's coming from the fact, from a few things. Number one, many, many children were being held out of school. And when I say many, I mean on the order of thousands. ASD, I found out over the weekend, was having about a 2% testing positivity rate. And so that was a decision that was made by the administration to move forward to get more kids in school. For parents and staff, there is sort of information, and I'll post this in the link, now what do you do if your child may have been exposed? You will be notified if there was a close contact, but there is a checklist for what you can decide to do. But quarantining is no longer required, but it's optional, as long as the student is asymptomatic. The district is working through staffing issues. It's a nationwide problem in bus drivers, cafeteria workers, nurses, substitute teachers. So hopefully, we will get more bus drivers on the road here in a few more weeks. And I will say that I've heard a lot recently about the importance of school counselors, and that's something that we're looking into as well. Over the weekend, I attended a school board training session, and I had a great presentation from the Department of Education and Public Health on what mental health is looking like in our schools these days, as well as resources for educators for self-care, so that they can really apply themselves to their students. So again, I can email all of these links to you guys. As far as future meetings, we have a finance committee meeting later this week on Wednesday. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, we have a regular school board meeting, and then again on October 5th. And with that, that's kind of the list of announcements I had. Are there any questions? And I'm not going to be able to call on people, so I don't know how that's going to work.
One very quick question, you said there was a school board meeting tomorrow. How can people participate in that or listen to it?
How can people, yeah, how can you participate? So, this is a great question. Anybody can watch the school board meetings live on YouTube, that's not really participation. By 2:00 PM tomorrow, you can email, no email, there is a form for providing written, telephonic, or in-person testimony, and I can put this in the chat, I think. I'm not as familiar with Teams as I am with Google. Or I can email the Board of Supervisors. But yes, there is on the ASD school board website, there is a tab about how you can participate in meetings. So 2:00 PM is that cutoff for signing up to testify? And your voice will be heard either under non-action items or action items. There are two separate sections for receiving public feedback, any three minutes, and if you seem to testify. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yeah, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question about the 2% testing positivity rate, and whether that was testing that was done in the schools that came back at 2% positive or some other source.
I'm sorry, I heard that you were referring to the 2% test, the positivity rate, but I didn't quite hear the question.
Right, I was just curious what that was 2% of. Is that 2% of school testing that's taking place in the school?
So, that's a great question, I don't know. This was introduced on Friday morning to me as a board member and a few others in a training session. That was the first data that I had heard about the students who were, I guess, those are the testing positivity rate of students who were close contacts of non-positive cases. Does that answer your question?
Sure, I think so, I was just a little curious. Thanks a lot for your update.
Again, we have a board meeting tomorrow night, which will be the first chance, I think, for the whole board to really press for a little bit more transparency.
Okay, any questions from the public? Don't see any hands, but I don't remember how to raise your hand on the phone. Someone?
No, Margaret has her.
Margaret?
Just that I've received a request for Mike to take his mask off when he's speaking. People aren't picking you up.
Okay. I will do that.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, well, I will send the Board of Supervisors, maybe just a quick email right now with a bunch of links, and hopefully you can get them out and share them with the community.
Thank you, we will.
All right, thanks everybody, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any representatives on the, either Senator Holland or Representative Kaufman or any of their representatives on the phone? Matthew.
I'm here to represent Representative Kaufman, if you guys have a little time.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Well, thank you for having me, this is Matthew, our meeting staff, Representative Kaufman. So at the state government level, the big things right now are fiscal plan and some discussion around COVID relief legislation and some things that the legislature can do around that. There's another special session which is called for October 1st. The only agenda item on that one right now, as it stands, is a bill with bills relating to the comprehensive fiscal plan. So just lacks the $1100 PFD and a few other budget items which were initially vetoed or left out of the budget because of disputes of how much was in it in certain accounts. That bill just got passed, and so the governor signed that bill to have a few of those budget items of $1100 PFD. And then now, the goal with the special session coming up, starting October 1st, is going to be more longer-term solutions. So we have the budget for next year, the PFD for, that will come out in about four weeks. And then, so now the special session is going to be more focused around the conversations which have been going on. There is movement around different pieces of the comprehensive fiscal plan. But those different pieces, the PFD formula, settlement, and the spending cap, possibly new revenues, possibly some efficiency initiatives, and then those are really the main pieces of that fiscal plan, which will be under discussion and review from October, for the month of October, basically. So if there are any questions about any of that stuff, I'll put some information in the chat to get a hold of our office. And we just put, expanded the website just a little bit, with still things being switched and being worked out, but we have some blog post type things about just understanding the PFD, the permanent fund, how it's structured, and a whole bunch of other things relating to budgeting process and process of building stuff. So hopefully some of that information in there, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Matthew.
Any time, contact our office.
Thank you. I do have one quick question. What is Representative Kaufman's position on new revenues, the options for new revenues?
Sorry, it's just a little bit hard to give this question of this edition on new revenues.
Sorry, which microphone are we using in the room? I just wanted to know, okay. The question was, could you summarize Representative Kaufman's position on the options for new revenues? Because it sounds like everything I see that has to be part of the mix.
Yeah, the big pieces of the discussion now is kind of like the balancing act with the big pieces of the budget, the PFD, you know, the operating budget, and then there's a gap between some proposals, like the 5% 50/50 is one of the proposals that was out there, where you take 5% of the market value of the fund, 50% of that will go to dividend, and 50% to government operations. Right now, if we were to enact that plan, there is like a revenue gap. There's an opposite, estimates are out there 500 to 750 million, or a little bit higher. So the main options that are out there for that gap, or ideally another formula with lower taxes, but there's sales taxes, maybe talking about some changes to oil and gas taxes. Discussion's happening around oil and gas production tax credit. We're using that benefit, adding in corporate income tax for oil and gas pass remedies, which is certain corporations like Philport, which don't get taxed like other people who operate on the slogan. And there's also certain things that we say, like open up certain areas of commerce, such as like gaming taxes are being discussed right now. So there's a bunch of different options about, there's card groups only, or video, online sports betting type of things, or video gaming terminals. You know, all of these have various sizes, so obviously a sales tax is a broad-based tax, it's going to be a lot larger than like all gaming options would bring in, about 300 million in the sales tax would bring in, depending on obviously the percentage of, on technicalities, between 500 and like 800 million. So they're different in size of the revenues. Basically, you just want to understand how all of that is going to play in together if we're going to be working on a comprehensive plan. Don't really want to sign on one piece, not another, understand how another piece is going to be affected. So again, the big pieces like PFD, spending cap, government operation spending, and new taxes, it's hard right now because a lot of them are being discussed individually. So we really just want to, you know, there's some things that could be okay if it works with the other pieces of the plan, and we just want to make sure that there's a clear understanding of the trade-offs that are being made if a decision like that is made. Not really like closing ourselves off to any, but we want to understand what people are getting and what trade-offs they're getting with each vote, or understanding how all those pieces are affecting each other. Now, it's kind of a roundabout answer, it's our fault, but I'm totally sure, it depends on the other pieces.
This sounds like many things are still on the table, possibilities. Thank you very much. Any other questions from supervisors? Okay, from any members of the public? Don't see anyone? Okay, thank you. Was there anyone from Senator Holland or the receiving members? I think John Weddleton did say, pass a message, he was going to be at Hillside, community council, and may attend later, so we will keep an eye out for him. Okay, we will move on from, we're doing things a little differently this month. We've moved a lot of the reports to the end, to written reports. So now we're going to move on to supervisor reports, and this is if we have anything specific we want to bring up. I will go around the room, Brianna?
I do not have anything specific to bring up, other than what's in the packet for reports.
Okay, Guy?
Yeah, no, I just, I'd like to thank the Muni and Chief Weston for continuing to try to secure this EMS funding that looks like they were received for 2021 to meet our budget that we set during last meeting, so it hasn't been actually signed, but based on what I understand, that's going to be part of our budget for 2021, and yeah, it's a big part of our operations here in Girdwood. So it's good to see, it hasn't been secured for 2022, it'd be nice to see that going forward, but I think those discussions are still happening. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I said this before, but just a reminder to everybody who's listening about the public safety contracts being renegotiated, and so everything that was on the table, it's not a slam dunk, everything that was on the table is on the table again. So if people have strong opinions about anything from us working out something with Anchorage Police Department, or working with Whittier again, depending on how the town council feels about it, and then just, yeah, all the things, it's not a slam dunk, but we just. feels about it and then just, yeah, all the things, it's not a slam dunk, but we just continue what we're doing. But the other thing that I did want to bring up is about this mental health rapid response team, which Tommy O'Malley's been asking some really interesting questions about and our alcohol sales tax. We've got this 5% sales tax that was passed and enacted in February. And some of the proceeds for that were supposed to go to mental health, drug and alcohol abuse, everything else. And so, long story short, this is in the written part of things, but they had, there was, they requested that we consider requesting putting it on the MOA GBOS joint meeting later. And the reason why we couldn't vote on it is that I was the quorum and so it was a little awkward to have me voting about what, you know. So, but I think it would be worth us talking about meeting that request even though it wasn't formally voted on.
Okay. We can also touch on that later in new business on the, about the quarterly meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I have one brief update on land use. There was a proposal about making a quite wide set of changes in Title 21 that came from the new administration. There was a possibility that might get fast-tracked. The Assembly, however, sent it to planning and zoning to look at. So it'll go through a longer public process and there will be more opportunity for us to comment on that. It wasn't clear at the last meeting or at land use whether that was the case on them. So there isn't a, it's not going to be a very fast process. Okay, we'll move on to service provider reports. I'm not sure if we have the fire chief. I believe we do have the chief of police. And I don't think Kyle is here, so let's start with, is Chief Weston on? I'm not hearing anything. There is a written report in the packet if anyone wants to pursue that, peruse that. Chief Ache, Ache, do you like to say anything?
Yes, I provided the statistics for this summer, from May through July for the current service area. On the front, obviously, we're not here probably next week, but that business as usual, a couple of things were made on our stats. We usually have others category for each month, and that should be we put out patrol calls across services or arenas, protective services on that. The other pathway, where they're probably going to break that down since it's a one flight signal, we have a call and get versus a paper services of that nature. Other than that, as usual, we're wanting to do that. And we're still able to recruit for that. That we're maintaining our traffic control areas, COVID road, July area, the Volts and Long Road construction area. So obviously, we're diligent to ensure traffic is maintained that area. That's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. I do have one quick question. I was looking at the statistics for calls to service for this year. How does that compare to last year? Because we were in this weird space last year in April/May time. Is it higher than last year or about the same?
I haven't looked at comparisons, but what I could do is I could pull up my stat from last year and get back to you. And if we're, if we're, I could just give you a copy of a year over to Margaret. Last year's stats were the same, the same periods, so it's a better comparison. Last year was the first year we sent the full, nine years were the stats that were. So this year will be the second year. So when I do my year-end summary, I was going to put both year's stats together. So there's a good comparison from 2020 versus 2021.
Thank you. Any other questions from supervisors?
I have one. Chief Ache, you said your one staff member down still?
That is correct.
How long have you been seeking that position?
We, that one position has been down for several months. We hire somebody, our biggest concern right now, what we're looking for is an experienced officer. That way they can actually go upstream faster after field training. So that's, I believe we've had that position down for almost six months. And what that position does is it allows us, because we have mandatory staffing, 24-hour period of two officers, that gives us an extra body to fill in. A day, almost like what's called a swing shift, so it works part days, part nights. So, but our minimum staffing is, that's right now currently at five officers per room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public or questions? I'll let Margaret manage that if there are any.
I don't see any.
Okay. Thank you. Now we go on to roads, parks and rec. Is there anything, I think you're representing Kyle tonight, Margaret, is there anything you'd like to add to the written report or point out?
In the written report, I would point out a couple of quick items that's at the back of the packet. In fact, it's very back. We don't usually point out these things, but I think that it's hard to get the word out. So I wanted to point out that Girdwood Rotary is sponsoring a health fair here in the community center this coming Saturday. See the flyers for services and signup information. The mobile mammography unit isn't available on the date of the regular health fair, but they are coming and they'll be here on Wednesday, the 29th. And again, the flyers are posted and you can find signup information there. And the last item is that the flu and COVID vaccines will both be available on Saturday, October 2nd here in the community center. They don't quite have it loaded onto their website yet. So we're promoting it, but maybe give it a day and they'll have the signup added to the website. It's not necessary to have an appointment, but I think it would be appreciated. Otherwise, the report's lots of fun and it has some pretty pictures.
Thank you. Any questions on the parks and rec report from supervisors or from the public? Okay. Again, if we haven't, I know John Weddleton is going to join a little bit later. I don't think he's here yet, but we'll keep an eye out for him later. We'll move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their name and full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online?
I don't see anyone online.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Kayla Harrison.
I don't know why I can't see you, Kaylee.
That's all right. I was actually raising my hand about your announcement as well. Thank you very much for notifying the community about Rotary sponsoring a health fair. And again, my name is Kayla Harrison and I'm now speaking as part of Girdwood Rotary and the Girdwood Health Clinic. The health clinic also has opportunities for mammography if the Wednesday day doesn't work. So contact the, or actually I will put up a phone number because they will also be in town on the second in part of the clinic. So lots of opportunities for health-related items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. You don't see anything, Margaret?
I don't.
Okay.
But I didn't see the other one either, so.
Okay.
If there's somebody, I'm watching a few things.
Speak up if you want to make a public comment, otherwise we will move on. Right, I'm not hearing any more public comments. So we'll move on to item number four of old business. Discuss and vote on proposed updates to GBOS rules and procedures and GBSA infrastructure to allow online hybrid public meetings. Can you speak to this, Margaret?
Yes. Hold on just a moment, I'm going to get the document up. Am I going to get the document up? And so, a couple of meetings ago and for some time, we've been talking about how to allow for the community will as far as holding public meetings, hybrid meetings or just virtual meetings. As I'm sure a lot of you are experiencing right now, our current technology as it relates to hybrid meetings is somewhat rudimentary. Here on the screen, it's Section K is the proposed amendments to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors rules and procedures. And the intent of this is that in the occurrence of a state of emergency, municipal proclamation of emergency or federal public health emergency, that there would be more flexibility by the Board of Supervisors in determining how to meet.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions or comments on this section? So the, just to quickly cover procedure, in our, in our operating procedures, we have a requirement that we publicly notice any change to our operating procedures for at least 30 days. So we did this 30 days ago. So I think that means we can discuss this, but any vote would either be to accept it or reject it. I think that in some ways that limits any amendments we can make now or we can make further changes in the future. So any, any comments here? Any comments from the public? Oh, sorry, Guy, please go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. Just, this reads that this only applies to public health emergencies or any other federal kind of emergency, right? Not in quote-unquote normal times. This option is not.
That's what this section does, yes. We have another, we have another more general discussion about whether, if we can get it to work better, whether hybrid would be a better model going forwards or whether online would be a better model going forwards. And I know Jennifer and I have got a, got an action to come up with a, at least a draft survey, which we will present to you in the future to sort of get community feedback on that. But this item by itself would allow us to go back to online now. But yes, it's only within the context of a public health emergency and one that would basically limit in-person attendance. So there are other public health emergencies which wouldn't affect us as well. There's no epidemic, it's a public health emergency, but it wouldn't actually affect within this section, it wouldn't affect in-person meetings because it's not a communicative, communicable disease.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Are there any comments from the public? Community? I'm not seeing anything in the room. Can you let me know, Margaret, if there's anyone online?
I'm not seeing any, but if there is somebody with a comment to make, please speak up.
I have a comment, this is Jerry.
Thank you.
So my first comment is that people are raising their hands and you don't see them. So this hybrid method is very difficult. And so as an example tonight, it's very difficult to hear online the voices of the people in the room at GBOS, whereas Kaylee, I can hear very clearly. So I don't know how we can fix that, but the audio from the room is extremely difficult to understand. I just thought I'd bring that up. Thanks.
Thanks, Jerry. I mean, the item is in the agenda, it's about both this change in the rules and then a little bit of a discussion about technology. We clearly have not got the technology set up correctly. The irony is we each have individual microphones, but they're not connected to teams. So that's one of the ways we could potentially do better in the future if we were to go down the hybrid path. But the other thing that's probably worth mentioning is there is an assembly ordinance which will be discussed at the next assembly meeting, which would mean that any board or commission which meets, if anybody from a board or commission, any member of a board or commission meets in person, then it would have to be open to the public. So that's something we're probably going to have to incorporate in our operating procedures if that passes at the next assembly meeting. But at the moment, this is, this is basically would put us back to where we were, what, five, six months ago.
Can I just say something about Jerry's comment? Jerry, that was exactly the experience I've had and I've tried to do this. It's been really hard for me to hear and I think that one advantage to getting this done is being able to, it actually works better having it all online in terms of the audio. I think that right now for us, not necessarily for the Anchorage Assembly, but for us, it's more participatory to have it all online because it is just so difficult to tell what anybody's saying.
Great.
Rather than.
Okay. Not hearing any more discussion. I would look for a motion to approve these changes.
I would like to move to approve the changes in Section K.
Give her a second.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, that has moved to a vote, so I think this we have to do a roll call vote. Margaret?
All right. Moving to a roll call vote then. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Gettington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
And Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Thank you. That's four in favor, unopposed.
Thank you.
Here's a chair. I have a quick question.
Sure.
Last time we rolled the cart sort of toward the middle, but I don't know if that helped the people online, but if the cord doesn't reach, we could, we don't have to. I'm speaking.
I hope that wasn't too painful for you. That may have been very loud.
Well, so we're not using the camera portion of this, so I'm just trying to get the audio out to a place where I can receive better.
Okay, so again, we've, we've moved the microphone around, so if this makes it harder to hear us, please let Margaret know in the chat, please.
So it might help if Mike switched with Guy just physically in the room, since you're the one who's speaking.
That is clear, but chat's disabled.
Yes, the chat is always disabled at these meeting teams.
Okay. Right, we will take about a one-minute break while we move our seats around and then we'll restart.
And I'm sorry, I also am not with Teams. Oops. Is it a little unnecessary?
Kathy's answering up for a bit and I'm not sure if it's about the server issue or the previous. No.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's what I was just commenting on that to Jerry. I've said everything. The only person I've been able to hear clearly in the room there is Margaret.
Ironically, I'm the one closest to the computer.
Yeah, and we're nice and clear.
Mike, I have an agenda question. I have some agenda question.
Yeah, so you have a point of order on?
Sort of, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. This, it's not new business yet because we don't have an action item about the, about the possibility of switching to online separate from this health thing. But I wasn't sure about the direction that GBOS wanted to go on that because before, it seems to me that there might be a conversation to have before it comes in as new business because not clear on whether the new business should be a survey trying to gauge community support or a proposed change. And I guess my thoughts on that is if we ask for the survey or if we go through all the hassle of the survey and it's not even our right to do that, then that's putting a whole lot of people through hassles for no good reason. And then on the other hand, if we push forward with it and the city blocks, it would really sort of help to have the idea that the community is behind this. the idea that the community is behind this regardless of Anchorage things because Anchorage might not be clear. We don't have access to the same technology especially not having a dedicated room being a huge thing. So I'm just curious what like, I don't know how to take this to the new business step.
My understanding is that under the Open Meetings Act and under the rulings we have from the municipal attorneys, we can have in-person meetings or online meetings or any mixture. The proposed change that's coming in front of the Assembly soon is that if board members are in a physical meeting space, then the public should also be there. But that really doesn't affect we've always done that, so that doesn't affect us. So we could go ahead and I think under the municipal code, we can go ahead and have online meetings if we want. I would suggest that what we do is new business next time, we actually discuss, we have a survey ready to go and we just discuss that and just act on it. And then we can we wouldn't have to vote in order to do the survey, I don't think. I think we can go ahead and just discuss the survey, possibly even the results of it, depending when we get the timing done. And then have a concrete proposal for old business after that.
Very helpful. Thank you.
The board may disagree, but that's what I would suggest.
Do you guys disagree?
I don't disagree.
Okay. This is Kaylee. Can I, I mean, I'm guessing sort of what Jen had to say that I did not hear. So if I can just a brief summary or almost get a brief summary. I kind of have an idea and I think we agree, but I would like to.
Do you want to go ahead and do that, Jennifer?
Sure. Sorry, Kaylee, can you hear me any better now?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, no, no. So my question was about how to move the item into new business of whether or not we needed a survey first to talk about online, switching to online meetings or whether we introduce it as new business next time. And Mike's suggestion was to get the survey. We don't need a vote to have a survey, get that survey because his understanding is that this is within our community, the purview of the rights of our community to decide how we want to meet regardless of what Anchorage Assembly is doing.
Got it, thank you. So that was sort of my question earlier. Item was, are we still pursuing a way to do online that's not related to the pandemic?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Maybe it would be nice to have that survey beforehand. I know there are a lot of questions on the last survey and the questions being answered. Surveys are typically very hard to put together that come give us meaningful information. I don't know if we have something in place to put together a better survey than last time or something, you know, that we're working with somebody and come up with questions and, you know, provide us with the answers that we want. If we're talking long-term, I don't know if we need to rush it before the next one. I mean, I'm fine with that, but any survey you get, you're always going to get questions of, you know, why did you ask those questions? And so it's something to consider before rushing it out there unless you, you know, or feel confident that your survey will answer the questions that we want.
Well, I think last time we accidentally made it more complicated than we needed it to be by tying it into health considerations and that this time we can be real clear, like, okay, we've got the health considerations part. But we have this opportunity now with when I look at our bylaws, I realize they were written at a different time for a different time. So they make a lot of sense for the time in which they were written, but they were written before Teams and Zoom and all of this. And they were written before we already got practiced at this. So I guess I just want to give the community, figure out a way to give the community an option to make a conscious choice about this. But I do want to make clear, we're not making the choice at this point. I just want to get to the point where we have the right and we can offer it as an option. But I don't feel like, at this point, I'm not saying, oh, this is what I think the community should do.
Right.
A good sound? Sorry.
Okay. Thanks.
Back on track, sorry.
We will move back to our agenda.
Yes.
So item number five, discuss economic development, tax exemptions under service area boards. That's an item for me. This is like very nerdy and inside weird interaction between state and municipal code or state law and municipal code. I've made some progress on this, but not enough to provide any useful summary of where we are. I need to reach out more effectively, I think, to our state representatives, our representative and senator. I don't think this is going to be the focus of their next special session. But there is, one of the ways to resolve this is to clarify something in state law. The other way to resolve it is to clarify something in municipal code. And I think both would prefer the others did it at the moment. So we will continue down this path and I hope to have something more concrete to discuss next meeting. Any questions on this?
It looks like one of the Assembly members came on.
Oh, right.
That's all.
Good. If there are no questions about item number five, either from supervisors or the public, we can revert back briefly to the legislative report if John Weddleton is online now. Are you there, John? Or Suzanne?
Okay.
Thanks, John. Please go ahead.
Thanks. I just got in here. I had three of you going and it was a pretty busy sound. So hello, everyone. Sorry, I'm not down there to see you. The Hillside Community Council drops right on top of you. So you may get other legislators on, switching to you guys if that happens. What, just some updates today. I am on the committee with Exaltel, Chris Constant, Larry Baker, Craig Campbell, and John Brown, looking at what to do to get homeless out of the Sullivan Arena and kind of short term and then longer term, what to do to kind of move things forward. And we are making progress. It's been a huge amount of time. I think someone actually did a tally. It's like we're about 48 or 50 hours in the last few weeks. And we are making progress. We're waiting on rough order of magnitude on a few options from engineers. We should hear on Friday, absorb it over the weekend and meet with them on Monday morning to go through and prioritize things. And then in the meantime, another really attractive option has come available possibly that we may look at too. But, you know, I think there's a lot of good give and take, good conversations. It's very, very complicated. But I am really confident that wherever we land, it would be better than where we were. So really, it's really nice to be part of that. The I guess you would not do some of these. I guess really, we don't have that long a list. There was a lot for the Anchorage Bowl stuff. But there are a couple of ordinances that were just introduced today at a special meeting that will be up for public hearing on the 28th, though it is possible that they may be postponed to the next day. I don't know. But it's just that's a busy meeting and these will take a lot of time. One is, an ordinance that would look at the time limit for mayoral appointments. Now, a mayor can appoint and six months later and wait six months before putting it up for confirmation by the Assembly. And that seems a long time to do that. So this would allow I just glanced at it fairly quickly, would not really take that away, but it would allow the Assembly to say, we'd like to schedule a confirmation hearing sometime prior to that six-month limit. So and that's fairly, could be complicated. So that's out there and I will be learning a lot with everyone else about that. Another one is an ordinance that would propose a mask mandate. It does have exemptions for people who have trouble wearing masks, medical and so on, other reasons. It's fairly lengthy and I only looked at it quickly. It was introduced today. We had each of the last two meetings resolutions that asked the mayor to essentially take action regarding COVID. And I voted against those because they really had no real impact. You know, we knew the mayor wasn't going to do those things. So it's like, why even do that? It was really, just seemed like it was kind of tossed in a pebble at the mayor. This one's different. This would put in code that in law, that there would be a mask mandate. And so essentially, he does do something. That is now the law of the land should this pass. It is a bit of a challenge because the mayor is supposed to enforce the laws and we're fairly certain he would not because he got elected to not do these things. So that would be a challenge. So the question is, is it really worth doing this if it won't be enforced? And that's certainly debatable. My view on it, all along in the various restrictions for COVID has been, you know, I've actually been reticent about mask mandates and business closures and so on. But the critical factor for me was hospital capacity. And over the last year, we've had hospital capacity. It was tight, but they're always run tight, but it was there. Right now, we're hearing loud and clear from medical providers and they're in big trouble. And I think you're all reading it, you're hearing it, and that can't be ignored. And that has been my trigger, which sadly we haven't hit. And I just don't agree with it, but here we are. So I don't commend it as opposed to taking some action and it certainly could be a mask mandate. So we'll learn more over the next, maybe next week or so on that. And that is those are the highlights. But I'm welcome to take questions, whatever works, Mike.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Oh, sorry. Please, or in person?
Is it, this is the line here?
Yes.
Sort of. Well, to comment.
Crystal, do you want to?
What?
You should just say who you are.
Oh, this is Crystal Hope. I was listening online initially and I just want a second and I couldn't hear what any of you guys were saying except Margaret and I heard Kaylee briefly. So anyways, I just wanted to share some requests that when I heard that the Assembly was going to be making code changes, I asked, I forwarded them to Mr. Weddleton and Suzanne LeFrance and asked them if they could include these changes that I've been interested in getting done in the Gerwood Code, which is recycling and also adding community gardens as a community use. And my email that I received back from the planning director said that she didn't recommend doing that. That said, instead, I propose to work on a Gerwood Omnibus amendment that addresses these items and a few other amendments that I believe may be near ready and that don't necessarily need a Gerwood Dairy Plant update to be completed before moving forward. So I think that Chapter 9 does need a lot of provisions and if there is a way that we can move it in the same way that Anchorage is moving theirs, which is quicker than taking years and years and years, then I think that would sure benefit and that we should maybe possibly put as a new business item agenda next one, basically a Gerwood Omnibus specifically, Chapter 9. Thank you.
That should definitely come through line use.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've talked to the public. Well, I was trying to raise my hand and public comment.
Oh, sorry.
So this is like, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Weddleton was aware that was the response that I got back from planning.
Right, I did get that. I really appreciate your sending that email, Crystal. I just want to make clear, you know, this, the Title 20 Omnibus thing that kind of came through the administration, that is not fast-tracked. I don't know. You know, it's going to go through the Planning Commission, through the normal process and then back to the Assembly. And I think it actually is big enough that it does make sense to break out the Gerwood parts because, you know, if there's controversial stuff in what's done for it now, you don't want your stuff beat up and tossed aside because of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So I see, Kathy, you also have a question?
Yes, I just more of a hoping that something will go forward to help us in this pandemic and anything you can do that would enable businesses to feel that they can mandate in their businesses that people should be masked to come in at this time. And because obviously, you're not going to be able to do anything about vaccinations. And at least if we can address part of that, anything that you could do in that regard, I think would be fantastic. So I know it's frustrating with this mayor, but.
Yeah, it's an interesting time, so I do expect something. My guess, as I hazard a one vote of 11, my guess is that it will pass. It will be vetoed and the veto will be overridden. It will be an interesting position, but that's the journey.
Yeah. Well, thank you for working on that.
Thank you. Any other questions in the public? Oh, I see another one. Jerry?
Yeah, I just want to concur with what Kathy said. And, you know, I would support a mask mandate in Anchorage. The hospitals are full and it seems ridiculous that we don't have one. And that anything you can do to relieve the pressure on the hospitals would be good. And whether it be mandating vaccines, mandating masks, whatever you can do, I would support. That's all I can say. Thanks, John.
Sure. You know, I would say one thing, I don't feel like I need to go defend the mayor anyway, but I guess as a city, we have set up two clinics that are looking for a third for those monoclonal antibody treatments. So that will pull them out. They don't have to go to the hospital. We, whoever, is a kind of problem there. So that's only for how you've got COVID and we'd like to prevent it in the first place. But, you know, it's the, you know, the mayor has set up some things. And interestingly, as much as he's come out and said, you know, no vaccine and masks and so on, or he said, talk to your medical provider. And we are hearing from the medical providers right now, do something. But, you know, if you go to the Muti website, it is very clear. The message is get vaxxed, you know, wear a mask, you know, goes through all those things. So his message is clear. But you go to Muti website, click that COVID button, you know, it's the standard, well-accepted, you know, regime for trying to, you know, tamp down pandemic.
If I could just make a quick comment on that. People don't go to this whole website. People listen to what the mayor says.
Yeah, for sure.
And, you know, if five people died this last week in the state from drunk driving, people would be all up in arms. Five people died of COVID this last weekend in the state of Alaska. And it just, it doesn't have to happen. So, yeah, stop.
No, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other questions from the public?
This is Kaylee. And I just wanted to concur what Kathy had to say. And also, sort of, while I understand that the Muti website has all the points been made and this is people's said, and I don't that the mayor has been proactive urging any sort of I think he's given a reticence, you know, swing at it only but that was in the face of the labor or some pretty horrifying testimony by our providers. They are out there for over a year, two at this point. It's rough. In that sense, I think that the Assembly has a tough job pushing this, but did a great job last year sort of mitigating new and old requirements, trying to find a way. Maybe her decision wasn't perfect, but at least there was that. Thanks. Thanks, Kaylee.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Right, thanks very much, John. Thanks for the report and.
Sure, I'll hang out for a while.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have been jumping around a little bit in the agenda. We will move back to our last item of old business, item number six, Agenda Item LUC 2101-06B, an LUC recommendation for GBOS resolution of support for code change to Table 21.09-2 on healthcare facilities, health services column within the GC7 district from 6,500 feet to 7,500 feet. I think Kathy or Lou, you can explain what that means to us all.
I guess you're stuck with me because
Kathy, great.
Lou is not anywhere where he can get to a phone or have internet connection tonight. And Mike, thank you for reading all that convoluted information to me and some kind of difficult, all those numbers. Anyway, and tonight I am here to request that the Board of Supervisors support a resolution for code change so that we can add approximately 1,000 feet to the clinic that you see growing on next to our now operating clinic. When you, this first slide shows in the upper part that in the GC7 townsite, the limitation is for building for 6,500 square feet. And for our clinic, that's been approved through the Urban Design Commission. We have everything started on phases one and two. We can, we're building 6,420 square feet. And what we want is what's identified here as a preferred optional enhancement, our phase three, which would add 930 square feet to that. So in order to do that, and Mike has probably read one, that would require the resolution for code change in that Table 21.09-2. in that Table 21 dot zero nine dash two. The next slide actually is where I want to go to. I have seven slides. I'll look through them very quickly and then go back to their questions. Here's our phase one and two showing. And that would be a total of under 6,500 square feet. And you can see in the lower left-hand corner, the southwest corner of the building, that would be, there's a concrete patio that will be built in phase two. And if you go to the next slide, excuse me. Can you go to the next slide for me, please?
I'm getting there, sorry.
Oh, okay. Technical there.
It's me on the iPad.
Okay, there it is. So that one shows in that lower left-hand corner that a phase three, that instead of a patio, if that area could be enclosed, it would provide a 930 square foot space to provide enhanced behavioral health services plus other community services I'll talk about. And going into the next slide.
I'm coming.
Okay. And this shows, boy, on mine, I can only see part of the.
Is that better?
Upper half of this shows the, you know, the main part of the clinic with 5,000-plus square feet on the right. And then in phase, you know, part of phase two, we will extend out to this administrative and staff break room area on the left. And then behind that, you see the patio. So further down that same page, so that would be phase two complete. That's all approved. If we are allowed to add this to do phase three, what we want to do is enclose that space that was originally identified as a patio, and enclose that into a very user-friendly, community-useful behavioral health specialty service room with a console, another console area. You can see there, little office area. And the nice thing about this building is this addition is that people can enter on the left there between the behavioral health services room and the administrative section. Yes, right there. Thank you. There's a doorway to the outside. It goes down a hall. At the end of the hall, there's a door that can be closed and secure, securely lock off the rest of the clinic so that this space with the large room could be used on weekends and after clinic hours nighttime for a lot of services that we anticipate being useful to this community, not just behavioral health services. As far as behavioral health services are concerned, we've seen a really big increase in that since we first started offering them. We did a survey in 2016, and that showed us that the community put that in the top three of the services that they felt were important to be offered at the Girdwood clinic. And we were, we were honestly kind of surprised that that was placed so highly. And now we see the numbers of the services from that time. Well, from 2018, when we started being able to offer the behavioral health counseling, it has increased more than double through 2020. And it is showing a greater increase during this time in 2021. Clinic staff reports seeing increased cases of domestic violence, sexual assault, depression, and substance abuse, sorry, within our community. Some of the other things that we would envision being able to use this space for is to provide space for group therapy, for family therapy, space for developing a medication-assisted treatment program for substance abuse. Also, perhaps, patient education in areas of nutrition, childbirth, community resources, and also providing space for specialists to see patients. For instance, having a specialist come down occasionally, like the diectrist or prenatal teaching lactation specialist. It also allows us to collaborate with community partners in shared space like Alcoholics Anonymous, Al-Anon, UAA Training Cooperative, Mental Health Partners. So basically, these things, trainings and events, can be held even if the clinic is closed. And that entering that section that would be open when the rest of the clinic is closed off would also have a break room kitchen area and a toilet in there, you can see. So it would be a very, very user-friendly space. Going on to the next slide. Well, this is, this is just an overview of the Girdwood Town Square area, a bird's eye view showing the floor area ratios. And to just show how much of the lot we would anticipate using, if we are able to enclose that whole space and have up to 7,500 square feet, we would be using less than 34%, well, approximately 34% of our space. And moving on. I know that some of these other lots have been grandfathered in, so I won't detail all of that. This is just the overview for the text amendment. And I think that Mike Endington knows a whole lot more about that than I do. He could certainly say what needs to happen. So we, sorry here. So really, at this point, we would respectfully ask Girdwood Board of Supervisors to initiate the petition for amendment and recommend the change to the Muti Planning Department and take it through that process. And the, oh, I didn't say the allowed uses of GC7 in there. What we're asking is for a text change in that one block that would only affect healthcare services or healthcare facility. It would change nothing else in that GC7 zone. It will only apply to healthcare uses. So at this time, are there any questions about any of the slides or anything I've said?
Thanks, Kathy. So I just wanted to repeat a couple of things you said, just so. So I think what you're asking for is, the way it has to work with Title 21, we discovered in the last year, is even if it's to benefit effectively a single project, you can't, it can't be that project that initiates it. It has to come from a body, a public body that's part of the review process. So that's effectively what the clinic are asking us to do. So we will, we're.
Correct.
We're basically saying for the benefit, and there's a set of criteria, but for the benefit of the community, we think this piece of, this code should change or circumstances on the ground have changed. And I think what the clinic is asking for, while I have some concerns about how we got here, what the clinic is asking for is quite reasonable. And the, you know, they're asking basically for the minimum change that will benefit. It won't have ripple effect on other construction or developments in Town Square unless there's another health clinic, which I suspect there won't be. I think that's my summary of where things stand, anyway. Any questions from the board? Please, Guy, go ahead.
I'm curious, is this a case-by-case basis? Or a blanket change to the code?
I'll characterize it, and then Kathy can maybe have a, maybe has a different view. I think this is a, obviously, it is going to benefit one project. But the argument, the argument is kind of a slightly more general argument that because historically, where the clinic is and where they've decided to continue their location, there's kind of, I don't think the, I don't think the Town Square, when it was originally set up, was sort of thinking about these larger facilities. So there are restrictions in the code that don't really work given the realities of things on the ground now. So it's a, we're solving, we're solving a problem in a slightly more general way than to just to benefit one project. But practically, it's going to benefit a single project. But one which is beneficial to the community. Did you want to add anything to that, Kathy?
I'm, I'm, I'm struggling at a difficult time understanding a lot of the board members, Mike including you. But I think really, this is a great opportunity for the community to have this, this space. It would allow, I think, many other community resources to partner with the clinic and utilize this space for a lot of things that it would be a very, I think, a very private space, kind of not like in a big public meeting area. And, you know, it's in the back of the building. And I think that's really nice for a lot of the things that I'm thinking that could be offered there. I can foresee a lot of education opportunities, like I mentioned. So I think it's really, really a great opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Nobody else does.
Go ahead.
Okay. Kathy, can you hear me at all? Kathy, I have a question about where the eighth whereas on the resolution of support. And it's the one about the recent addition of the alcohol tax has created a new response team that could require space in Girdwood. And I was just wondering if the clinic had actually been approached by, about that, or if their, or if that was really mostly hypothetical at this point.
We have not been approached by that specifically. But it, as far as I know, it's hypothetical. We don't know what that would involve. Certainly, I mean, we can provide shelter, you know. We can provide housing. But we certainly provide services as we do now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I see a couple of hands, at least one hand. From the public, do you want to go ahead, John?
Boy, I can't hear anything. There's a very loud sound happening.
It's like a huge. It's something on her.
Oh, something thing?
Yeah.
If I can.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what's happening.
Margaret, is it possible to mute Kathy for the moment, just until I get sorted out? And then other people will be on the screen. We're just dealing with some technical issues here.
I can't hear her.
Okay, John, I see your hands up. Do you want to, do you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry, trouble, I'm reading there. You know, Kathy, the alcohol tax is, of course, probably $14 million next year. And there's probably $20 or more dollars, $1 million worth of stuff going for. But, you know, it is for homelessness is one kind of part of it. We roughly did a third, third, third public safety, but very broadly defined. And also kind of root causes of homelessness and trouble. You know, I guess, you know, ACEs kind of thing. So if there's a component in the clinic that fits any of those, you should let us know. So I think, you know, mental health, that can absolutely be partially, you could get help through the alcohol tax. So there are absolutely things you do at the clinic that it would apply to. And, you know, it is not fair that there would be, I think it's a reasonable case to say something should go to Girdwood because we do get taxes out of Girdwood. And some of what we're doing, it just isn't applying very well to Girdwood. So don't, feel free to, if you can come up with something. Don't make it millions, it might be tens or hundreds of thousands. But if you let Suzanne and me know, we'll look at it and see if we can make a pitch for it. And soon would be better because we are hitting budget season in October.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from public? Actually, we should probably move on outside. I see.
Deanna.
John may have put his hand back up, or maybe it's from earlier. And Deanna, do you want to go ahead, Deanna?
I just wanted to address a question about whether this would blanket code to change, or change to the codes. It is a blanket change to healthcare clinics in GC7 district. So should there ever be another healthcare facility in the GC7 district? They would also be allowed to build 7,500 square feet. Any other facility is not affected in GC7 district.
I have a quick follow-up for that, Deanna. Does that include other healthcare services like pharmacies? And, you know, I don't know what else it would be, physical therapy and things like that?
Physical therapy would be asked by a physical facility. I am not specifically sure about pharmacy. But it would be other Medicare care, a hospital would be considered a healthcare facility, obviously. What else would likely be in Girdwood? If a, if a medical doctor decided that they wanted a primary care office down there, potentially with some therapy, they would also be allowed to build about 7,500.
Thank you. From a process point of view, what we would normally do is read the resolution into the record. I'm not sure, given our problems with audio, whether that is a good idea or not. So I would suggest or entertain that someone pass a motion, and we just refer to the written form in the packet.
I move that we not read the entire motion into the record tonight. And we re, or have it in place as the text packet. And I move to support the resolution in the text packet.
Thank you, Brianna. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Guy. Any further discussion on the motion in front of us? Okay, I'm not seeing any here. Again, unless there's any more comments online. If you cannot raise your hand, just speak up now.
John Weddleton's hand is still.
John, is your hand still up from earlier?
Sorry, you can put it down if I can't figure it out.
Thank you, John. Okay, so not seeing any more comments. I think we can move to roll call vote.
Great. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Mike Endington?
Yes.
And Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Thank you, 4-0 in favor.
Thank you. We can move forward. We will probably not be putting this on an omnibus Girdwood change request. This will probably be by itself.
I meant for next month.
Understood. We're now onto new business. Item number seven, is that, are we going ahead with that? Or is that people?
I think that we should ask Michelle. I believe I saw her join.
Love her join.
Chief Weston, are you on the call? I'm not able to hear you if you are there, Michelle. Okay, I think I was. Okay, I think I was, I don't think we have anything in the packet, do we, about this?
No, it's new business, and so not a lot of information would be required. This is something that came up in one of the budget meetings, and so we rolled it into new business. So that's why we were hoping to have a presentation from the chief.
Okay, well, I'm definitely, I'm not hearing anything from the chief. I don't know how we want to proceed with this, whether we bring it back as new business next, next one still.
If I recall correctly, she was estimating that it was going to be about fifteen thousand dollars for the machine that they were looking for. So we could say something like under twenty thousand for purposes of this discussion, at least to move it forward. I think the issue is whether or not such a machine is actually available through the supply chains at this time.
Yes.
So I don't know that it's necessarily time sensitive, but I would hate to delay it any longer, just because she's not able to attend at the moment. So if we could consider it as old business at the next meeting, or perhaps she'll pull it from the agenda if she's finding that the supply is not there.
I think this is a fair comment. Is there any, any thoughts on that from the board?
I agree with that. You don't want to delay it. She's on deployment right now, so you know, she's, she's busy. We'd like to learn more about it.
Yeah. And again, if we have an approximate cost, I think that's, I would be uncomfortable without just an, an empty dollar figure. But if we have an approximate cost of fifteen and definitely under twenty, I think we could consider this having been introduced.
All I was going to add was, from what little I know about snow machines and other vehicles, or anything that has been backordered and short supply or void of supply in the last several months, having this as old business at the next meeting would help just a chance of even securing one, because other places I know of are on waiting list to even get one.
Thank you. So we will go ahead and, so we will go ahead and leave that on the agenda for next month, under old business next month. Item number eight, discuss GTC recommendation for GBOS resolution of support, a proposal for Girdwood Bike Park master plan to submit with construction grant application in the upcoming year. Do we have anyone from, probably Bike Wood who can talk to this?
This is Nick George Losai, I'm here on the meeting.
Hi Nick, please go ahead.
I'm going to keep this brief. Basically, what we're looking to get is a resolution for GLS to, 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 to buy them some brand money to build some more trails next summer. In order to get grants to show, to support, that's what we're looking to do. We all know that the trail master plan is working on town, and it's kind of hopefully coming to an end this winter, to get ahead of that.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit there Nick. Could you repeat the last section?
Basically, this request is trying to get ahead of the, you know, the proposed master plan coming to an end hopefully this winter, instead of being able to, for us to apply for grants prior, prior completion of that. So we can have funding locked in for, for next season, hopefully continue building trails up in Bike Park.
Thanks.
Is that clear?
Yeah, there may be some specific questions from the board. Do supervisors, do you have any questions on this?
I do, if your bells does.
Please go ahead, Guy.
Have, I assume this has been brought up, Trails Committee and Land Use Committee, could you tell me what those conversations were like, or where they stand on that?
Were you able to hear the question, Nick?
I'm having troubles hearing what that question was.
I'll, I'll try and repeat it. I may not be much clearer. Guy just asked if.
I can hear you, Mike.
Good. Guy asked if, what the discussions with the Trails Committee and Land Use Committee, what sort of topics they brought up and where those discussions stand.
I guess the discussion is basically, you know, mainly rooted around the fact that, you know, we've, we've kind of been, as Bike Wood has proved, has been kind of patiently waiting for this process to go through its rounds. And they all feel like we've kind of been at the brakes, but on our, our progress, you know, throughout the process, patient, I think they were all, there was a large amount of support for us to be able to attempt to secure some funding throughout the winter, as to how to stage this plan, this form. We, we are ordered a unanimous vote at the trail meeting to move this resolution to GLS.
Just answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from board?
Yeah, actually I have a follow up question to that.
Please go ahead.
I guess I don't quite understand your answer. You're saying this hasn't gone through land use, right? So it just went through, got unanimous consent at Trails, but didn't go through the land use?
I think I might have a little bit more insight on this. So it has been presented as old and new business at Trails, but was just presented as new business at Land Use.
Okay.
So, so Trails did support it unanimously.
Okay.
And Land Use listened to the presentation.
Which is what we're doing now.
Which is what you're doing now, too.
Okay, great.
So the Land Use will have perhaps more input. But I think Nick mentioned that it's unusual, so I'm going to state it again, that this received a resolution in two thousand nineteen with the support of Trails and the Land Use. It's just coming back because a resolution was never ultimately produced, because it was determined at that time that the weight really needed to go into developing the Trails master plan, which this is a part of.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bit of an unusual cycle that this one has been through.
Okay.
Thanks. So I have a question, Nick. And you don't necessarily have to answer it now, but we'll probably continue this discussion next month at next GBOS meeting. But if you, since you have, you have a proposal here, and potentially you'll get funding for some of these, some of this construction. If it turns out that the Trails master plan comes to a different conclusion and contradicts your plans here, what, how would you resolve that?
I guess I'd say that's a great question, but I don't know if I really would want to try to answer that until there's a scenario.
Okay, so I mean, there, it obviously is a possibility. So there have to be some, at least, you know, if not acknowledgement of that, at least a plan for dealing with that if that comes up. I mean, it may only be differing in small amounts.
Yeah, I guess if for some reason our, the Bike Park was not included in the master plan, we would probably just revert back to what we originally attempted to do maybe two plus years ago, and just present this project on its own.
Okay, thanks. I know it's hypothetical, but it obviously is a concern. Thanks, Nick. Any other questions from the public, or indeed from the board? I'm not seeing any hands up on, on Teams. If anyone can't put their hand up to speak now? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Nick. And again, we'll hear more about this next month. Thank you. We'll move on.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. We'll move on to item number nine. Discuss agenda topics for municipality and GBOS quarterly meeting scheduled for Monday, October the twenty third, at the Girdwood Community Room, probably on Teams, on Monday, October the twenty fifth. We have a, I think the last agenda, Margaret, can you speak to this?
This is a draft agenda based on items that have been discussed at other meetings, and also the last meeting that was held, which was in July, I believe. And so you'll see the easy ones at the top, introduction, economic development, tax exemptions. That was an item that was on the original agenda with them in the summer. Fire Department EMS contract has been on the agenda, and so I haven't taken it off yet, but it would be great to be in that situation. And then number four was the one that I think Brianna mentioned earlier about the mental health rapid response team, Girdwood Implementation and Service. Or maybe it was Jennifer, but anyway, the Public Safety Advisory Committee will be meeting October fourth, I believe. And so at that time, it was new business at their last meeting. At their next meeting, they could vote to request that this be added to the agenda. Other items that we have discussed have been housing, nightly rentals, ADUs, parking, industrial park planning efforts, secure trash regulation zone, and cemetery project. There might be others that you want to add. This is new business at this meeting, so we'll be talking about it at the October meeting and setting the agenda at that time.
Thank you. I think the one item we probably want to add on there is other sort of large infrastructure costs over the next year or two, like potentially the hand tram, or replacement of the hand tram. Any other thoughts or comments from the board? Guy, please go ahead.
I don't know if this would be the right thing. We've brought up the alcohol tax a few times. Is this something that we could bring up during this meeting as well?
I think that's, at least most of that is covered by item four. And that's funded by the alcohol tax, but I think it's the, it was the rapid response we were talking about.
That is.
Same, Michelle?
Chief Weston, please go ahead, or Michelle, depending on which half aware.
My thought, I'll put my hand down there. My thought was that hopefully the EMS contract will be very close to signing and will not dominate the conversation at this meeting. But if Chief Shroggy is there, it'll be good because he can answer questions on the mental health rapid response team and the crisis intervention team, which are two different things, but both are funded, I believe, by the alcohol tax.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or the public?
Just, sorry, just one clarification. So I think what Chief Weston is saying is that on four, that would be, it's actually two separate things. We also have to have the C, I forgot, we also need the C.
Crisis Response Team.
Sorry, what?
Crisis.
Response Team, I think it is.
Crisis Response?
Is it Crisis Results of Crisis Intervention?
Intervention.
Intervention.
C, yeah, the C.
So it could be like four A and B, or, or one of those underneath four is alcohol tax, or just a separate number. But yes, they all need to be discussed.
Okay. Any other inputs to this item? This is, or new business that we'll be discussing voting on the agenda next month. Okay, item number ten, agenda item LUC twenty one oh nine dash five, notice of liquor license renewals in two thousand and twenty. There is a request from LUC to recommend GBOS provide a letter of non objection for the two thousand and twenty two likely liquor license renewals. The, actually, I'm gonna, it confuses me. I'm gonna ask Margaret to give a quick summary of what this process is and where we are.
So basically, the process is that the municipality puts together all of the liquor licenses that are due for renewal, and it asks for the community councils to provide input if they wish to challenge any of them, if there have been complaints about any of them. So that does have a timeline, and that would require a resolution to be received no later than October the fifteenth. So if we were in that situation, we would at this point be setting a meeting to handle that. We've heard no responses in the negative toward any of the renewals that are up in the coming year. So that means that we move over into requesting sort of a blanket letter of non objection that would cover all of the Girdwood license renewals. And then we would sign that. And when I receive the requests for community input, I would send that to the municipal clerk to handle. And so it allows us to handle all of the renewals in one page and in one or two meetings instead of each one separately, which has been really successful.
Thank you. I think one thing we, I think we clarified when discussing this is, this is just limited to renewal. So if there was a transfer or a new application, we would still go through the normal, the full local process.
There'd be more going on, Cathy.
Yeah, yeah.
And we do know that there is one here that is not in use at this time. And I don't know exactly what the options are for them, but regardless, they hold a license that will be subject to renewal, whether it's renewed or not.
Thank you.
Is theirs.
Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, anything from the community? And I'm not able to see the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Teams, just in case there's someone.
I was wearing my other hat.
I do not see any comments. Again, if anybody has any comments or thoughts, just speak up. Otherwise, we will move on. Okay, so, so we've changed our structure around a little bit. So we have reports at the very end. These are all written reports. If anybody has any questions on these or comments, welcome to go ahead and make them now, whether from the board or the public. So this covers various subcommittees and, or committees and subcommittees, and other associated activities. Yeah, please go ahead, Jim.
I'll have a closer to my phone.
I think if you speak here, you'll be heard on Teams, but you may not be heard on the radio.
Oh.
Oh, no, actually, you should be heard on the radio. Is the radio feed going through? I'm not sure. We, try, try here and see what happens.
Okay.
We'll find out.
I'm Jamie White. I'm with the English Library. We're a part of the English Public Library. My written report is in the packet, but I just wanted to encourage everybody to look at that, visit our website, englishlibrary.org, or visit us on Facebook. I'm still new, so I'm always looking for new ideas. I've been trying to get out to get the meeting and whole library card signup tables and options to check out materials. I've been at the grind at Girdwood recently. If you are interested in seeing me somewhere else, just let me know. We have looked for our events and any services we have going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, I have something to say about that. That, I know it's not your personal program, but I have to say that the Baby Yoda library cards are unbelievably cool. And we gave one to my daughter as part of her birthday haul, and that was her favorite present of all. So.
So I'll plug this as Jennifer brought it up. English Public Library now has the Child, Roku, or Baby Yoda, you can call them any of them, cards during the month of September. If you're interested in getting this special edition card, it is only during the month of September. If you donate five dollars to the library, you can get this card. Our classic card is always free if you want to spend it for a regular one, but this is a really front promotion we have going on for a limited amount of time.
And I still want to put in a plug for holographics. I just have to say.
Library cards, cool layout. Okay, so if there are no other comments from the public, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's check in on them.
I don't see anything from the public, so it's kicked in. Are you allowed to move to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Guy, I'm sure, second. Okay, one favor. Thank you very much.
It's eleven o'clock here.
That's right. Eight forty-five. So hybrid is clearly the fastest.
Thank you.
That's because nobody can hear you, but.
That may be the. That may be the secret.
We're all online. We all hear perfectly and stay long.
Thank you, everyone, for participating.
Everybody, all right. Jamie, you hung in there. Thank you for that. Thank you for hanging in there.
They're saying that she had to say thank you at the end.
Oh, sorry, you had to wait. Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, I've been waiting since we had some order, my son looks like he was.
Changing the order helps.
Maybe, too. And so, yeah, I was having trouble with arrows and everything.
Can you be any age to get the Baby Yoda, like a five-year-old?
I have one, too, please.
There are no age requirements or restrictions. Pretty much you just have to look at the county, the age, but you can jump until...
All right. Yeah, so the kids, I watched. I know the oldest one had one. I don't know if his sister ever got one. And now I'm not watching her, she's a good girl.
He was trying to follow.
I'm gonna have to see.
Putting all of that, we're going to turn it back up recording.
Brilliant, okay. Yeah, I think like some are made of orange and all. Adorable. Pretty funny.